Okay. Good afternoon. The time is now 1:30, right on the dot, just like we said.[7.02][7.02](Laughter). An requirement the Board is present, the State Board of Ed meeting of December 11th, 2012 is called to order. The first item this afternoon is approval of State Board of Ed minutes of November 20th, 2012.
I'm happy with that.
Okay.
Do you have a question?
For someone who's in the room.
No.
Yeah.
What's your?
Should we wait and give each other?
I can wait. I guess it doesn't say, you know, something bad.
If it's spelled right, all the way down.
Did you take that paragraph all about personal development?
No. We all want to vote on that one.
Where Cassandra agreed with everything that Nancy Danhoff has said for the last two years.
Often drone on and on again.
I sent you electronically. You were a disaster.
We must have used the word recipe in there if you're sensitive to it.
You missed my genuflections to your criticism of my droning on and on this morning because you were at the big rally. So several times I referenced that you were really lucky to have escaped because here I was, droning on and on. So Mary.
I don't do that. That's all right. We all got a lot of work done, so you know.
Okay, we're going to move on. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Nancy. Support. Supported by John, and give that a moment. Some of you looking at appropriately at the minutes for a moment. Any discussion by others? Corrections?
I try.
Okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oh, same. Public participation.
I do not currently have any forms for public participation. Does anyone have a form they'd like to turn in?
Okay, great. Thank you.
Who's participating at the Capitol? Are new, former, old media participants here?
We saw Jerry, but why don't you, yeah, Jerry's, what got you here today, Jerry?
Pressure.
Pressure.[149.51][149.51](Laughter). They're running out of troops to cover everything, right? Paul Jada Retirement for a day?
Yep.
Always nice to see you back.
Thank you.
You know, I've lost control of this because originally there was only going to be one new employee here, but I'm going to just ask folks to introduce themselves because now there's at least five or six, and I don't have it in our script here. So let, the Board knows, Kathy brought this up a while back, great idea, we get to meet new folks as they come onboard, almost all of them, if not all of them, are replacements for existing or 100% federally funded, but we welcome you all. So would someone start and be brave and introduce yourself, what department, what division you're in?
Okay, I'm in the end, you're looking at me. I'm Kristy Egan, I'm with the Office of Great Start, Child Care, New Provider Enrollment Unit. So I'm the manager for that unit. On January 1st, we're going to start doing the unlicensed provider enrollments for the state of Michigan, which has formerly been done on the PHL office.
Great.
So the rest of my staff came onboard yesterday, you'll get a chance to meet them this month. Happy to be aboard.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Ashley Hunter. I work for the Office of Great. My name is Ashley Hunter. I work for the Office of Great Start in the Central Reconciliation Unit. I assist providers that have issues with billing and payment inquiries.
Thank you.
My name is John Jakewood. I work for the Bureau of Assessment and Accountability as an assessment consultant for students with disabilities, be working on the alternative assessments.
Good afternoon. My name is Maria Silva. I am the English Learner's Consultant in the Office of Field Services. I began my career in Saginaw as a teacher for bilingual and migrant education programs, and my last appointment was with the Detroit Public Schools as their director for their English learners programs and oral language programs. And very excited to continue to work with the children and families of our English learners in the state of Michigan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Michelle Williams, and I'll be joining the Office of Field Service team with the Special Populations Unit, and I'll be working as the migrant education consultant. So I'll be providing technical assistance and support to our 28 regular year programs and our 26 summer programs. Previous to this, I've worked on contract with the office for the last year, and prior to that, I worked as the English learner and migrant director for West Ottawa Public Schools. And like Maria, I'm very excited to be here supporting your work and our work.
Great. Thank you all.[321.12][321.12](Applause). And you are.[325.81][325.81](Laughter). Well, thank you, and welcome. We're delighted Abby is part of the team, and I think those of you who are able to sit in for a while, and you're welcome to sit in as long as you can today, you'll see we're very fortunate to have good people who decided to run for the State Board and really do a great job for the kids of this state, citizens of this state. John, President's Report.
Now, now, Mary Ann. Now I get to drone on again? And you're here?[364.12][364.12](Laughter). I just would say a couple of things. Given the helicopters circling the Capitol, the right-to-work episode is, in my view, very sad and unfortunate, just from an education, what it means for education perspective. You know, as I wrote in a piece yesterday, the states that are growing with growing incomes are not, none of them are right-to-work states, growing private sector incomes, they are the best educated states. And we, the way the economy works is not being the low-cost producer that attracts factories and plants. It's where does the educated person graduating from Grand Valley or U of M or McComb Community College, where do they want to make their lives and take their talents and grow a business? And, you know, they're not rushing to Indiana or Alabama or Mississippi because it's right to work. They are going to Chicago and Boston and New York and Seattle and leaving us. And so we need to create the conditions that make the best education possible for everyone here and attract the best educated people from around the world to live here. And I am worried that we'll not make headway in the next year after this big fight, and we won't attend to that. And the biggest union, it is a political effort to diminish the political impact of unions. It's not about the economy, and the biggest unions are the teachers' unions. And we're just sending a message that we are going after you, teachers, and diminishing teachers and demoralizing teachers. At the moment, we should be saying, we need to help you be supported and feel good about your job and want to enter the profession and have the best teachers possible if we're going to deliver the education that will help us succeed as a state. So I think it's sad and I'm disappointed and enough sad by me. The two other things, I mean, all the rightful, I think, attention to the various education proposals, new school creation, House Bill 5963, the EAA as it was loaded up with a variety of ornaments that had to do with new school creation and warehousing schools so they could be turned over. All of that attention about what was really going on and at stake, I think, was good and healthy and succeeded in calling out the effort to potentially even in lame duck move some of those pieces into being, but provoked us all to have the kind of thoughtful discussion about how do we shape education with new different choices or linking funding to the student that we were and are contributing to today? And it needs to be a very robust discussion and end up working to deliver quality education. So I'm happy that we are all animated and contributing to that discussion, and it's going to continue in the next year. I do think that attention did ensure that the EAA bill, which I know several of my colleagues here don't support in any form, but for those of us who want to see an EAA that is effective in helping turn around the lowest achieving schools, I think the legislation is now, if it were to pass now or at any time in the future, is pruned back to be exactly that. And that's good. And that was the good attention to what is going on here and what should this legislation really be about, that should inform a good EAA that it works as a statewide turnaround district focused on its mission of turning around or replacing schools that we can't manage to succeed. So I am hopeful and optimistic about that. Thank you.
Thanks, John. When I realized a bunch of you hadn't seen a podcast I did a few weeks ago, Marty just took one little clip briefly, because it's an overall point I want to make, the other parts are somewhat dated, especially as of this morning, but this part might help me make a point.[595.73][595.73](Crosstalk). How many MDE employees does it?[609.91][609.91](Laughter). Sorry, Mom.[613.41][613.41](Laughter). I'm including myself in that.
Oh, you mean they're turning off the light?
They were changing the light on.
All that, and I think it's 30 seconds.
So, let's take a deep breath. Their work is tough enough as teachers. Most of us could intend to 30 kids in a classroom, 180 kids in a high school for a high school teacher every day, let alone teach them math or science or English or history, or as an elementary teacher, all of the above. And by the way, then those elementary teachers have to teach them to read by third grade.
Well, that's abbreviated, obviously.[654.16][654.16](Laughter). But I, okay, thank you. But I wanted to, I think, no matter where you are on some of these reforms, I think one thing that would be important for us to, I tried to say it, and take a deep breath, is that to 100,000 teachers, the overwhelming number don't know the difference between what the legislature is doing, the governor, the state board, the state superintendent, and they just are feeling overwhelmed. And I was thinking out loud at lunch that, I think the military is a good example where they're very concerned about morale. You hear it all the time, and appropriately, that high morale and they'll perform better. And I think if we're not careful, well-intentioned people up here, given the benefit of the doubt to everyone, can create an environment where people are so demoralized they can't function. And then if that happens, we might as well not, all these reforms go by the wayside. The ones, I think John's done a tremendous job in trying to isolate the ones that are going to be helpful in getting the Board together on those. But I would just say it's time to take a deep breath, you know, and I mean, it's some of what we're pitching to legislators through Marty and Wendy. We pitched it two weeks ago, it didn't actually accomplish everything we hoped in that sense. But I would just say that it's a nonpartisan thing, I think, to just say, teachers are overwhelmed right now, my own daughter, and you have your own stories, but these 180 kids a day, I don't know how she does it. There's constant pressure on them, and then if they think, even if it's unfair, but if they think, well, we're not even appreciated for what we're doing, then we've just lost the whole battle. So my pitch today would just be that everything we can kind of do to take a breath, stabilize things for a while, and let the current reforms, there's a lot of reforms in place even before this last few weeks, as John and many of you have said, that can, that need time to kick in and see how they're going to work. That's my report for today. By the way, I did, I do have a Margaret Mead, this is my favorite Margaret Mead quote, "Never believe that a few caring people can't change the world, for indeed, that's all whoever have." And I think we can represent that on behalf of the state here at this table. So Bobby Joe, one of our highlights of a meeting.
Thank you. So today I wanted to share a successful practice that we have been implementing in our school the past couple of years, and actually, my instructional leadership team is conducting today without me, so I hope that's going well. Last, the previous summer, through the Michigan Institute of Instructional Leaders, which the MDE has helped support, we received a book called Instructional Rounds in Education. And I don't know how aware you are about the instructional rounds piece, but what it has done is it was inspired by the rounds that the physicians do in medical school. And this practice has been incorporated into education as a way to observe other fellow educators in the classroom, have a discussion around the best practices, and to analyze what's working and what's not in our classrooms. After reading this book and doing a book study, our instructional leadership team decided to try to implement these rounds in our school, and we have found a lot of success with it. This summer, the MyFill Institute had recognized that we were doing some good things with this instructional rounds, and they interviewed me and wanted to put some of my thoughts, some of our thoughts from our team into a module they're doing through the K-12 outreach through MSU, are doing modules, so other schools that are not part of this program, and this program was for the low 5% of the schools, to help them, move them up, they're doing these modules so other schools can implement some of the strategies that we've been doing. So I just wanted to share with you a little clip from the module, me discussing the instructional rounds that we do at my school.
I have loved instructional rounds, and it has been a work in progress. The best thing about instructional rounds, we've tweaked it a little bit different to work for our group. We don't have any administration, and I would highly recommend that for any new group, no administration. Have your ILT team with your teachers, your colleagues. Once we let our teachers know that it was us, the relief level you could see was, okay, this isn't going to be evaluative, there's not going to be a principal in there judging me, it's peers, helping each other improve. And that's what you need. You need to let them know, it's not, we're here, you're here, it's all of us are here, and we're all just helping to go higher and improve, and that's so important. And we are really transparent, and we let the teachers know what we're looking for. We're looking for the things from our school improvement plan. And we let them know why we're in there. And the reason why we're in there is not to pick you apart, but we're in there and looking across this to see if what we are doing to support you is working. Because if we go in there and we see certain things not being used or not being used correctly, then we know as a building, as ILT, we need to bring in more professional development to support you. Because you don't always know if things are being done right, or if things are being done around your school, you need to check that. So when teachers knew the reason why, and that it was for a benefit for all, they were very highly receptive. And we added an extra component, is we invited the teachers in for a conversational talk after, where we let them know what we saw in their classroom and what we saw the students doing. And then we saw, or we asked them wonderings, to push their thinking and ask them, and more often times than not, the teacher will ask for that feedback. What do you see, what could I be doing better? What did you see on that? And they wanted that growth, and it was really exciting. We even had a teacher that said, when you guys are coming in and you guys are doing these, you're pushing me to think outside of my box and other ways, and I feel like with colleagues coming in, I have to live up to that because my peers are seeing me now. So that's been wonderful. And something that we want to do next year is we want to add teachers onto these instructional rounds, not just the ILT team, because you can gather a lot of great things from other teachers' classrooms, other ideas, ways that they do different things. And if we invite some other teachers, even especially newer teachers, teachers we might see struggling, and say, hey, would you like to come on this instructional rounds with us and look at what's going on, they might get more excited, see what their peers are doing, what to improve themselves. So that's our next step for next year.
That's great.
So with that, one of the reasons why we're doing these instructional rounds is to see if the PD that we've been giving teachers and instructional strategies that we've been demonstrating are actually working, being implemented in the classroom, and we're seeing where there's a need, such as a need for improved use of technology in the classroom or more reading literacy strategies. So what we have been doing is from the feedback that we've been gathering from doing these instructional rounds in the teachers' classrooms, is we then will develop our PD from there. And it's been, it's been really wonderful in the fact that we have decided, for a PD, the traditional way is always to bring outside sources in, paying for somebody to come give the PD, but we have a wealth of resources in our own building, different teachers who may be, their forte might be in the reading strategies or might be informative assessment. So what we've been doing is having teachers leading the PD at our schools, and doing them in sessions and kind of round robin, and in different teachers, when you find a need that, a need for something that you want to improve on, you can actually go to that session, informative assessment or technology. And it's been working really well, and we've had better feedback than we had for any PDs that we've been doing. And it's been working so well that our district last month has actually incorporated this as well. They had teachers leading the PD for district-wide in different school buildings, and the teachers can choose which PD, which session they want to go to. I led one on classroom management, rituals and routines and relationships. And again, the feedback's been wonderful, we're using our own resources. I think you get a lot more buy-in from teachers when it's your own peers who are in the classrooms teaching the same students as you, they're the ones giving, hey, this is what's working in my classroom. So that's worked really well. The other thing is the open-door policy. I know when I first started teaching 16 years ago, I, there was times where I went two, three years and never had another fellow teacher come in my classroom, or administration comes in once or twice a year for evaluation. And our school's just been so much more open-door. We have a lot of colleagues coming into other colleagues' rooms, seeing what works. Hey, I heard that you're really good at this, can I come sit in your room? Doing instructional rounds, learning wacks, and it's a whole learning community, and I think that's the only way that a school can really grow and improve, is by using the resources that you have in your own school, and looking at that and being accountable to each other. As I sit up there, a lot of the teachers now are saying, well, when my colleagues are coming in, I want to make sure I'm doing a good job. I want my numbers, I want my student achievement to look good, I want, you know, to show the people that I'm working with that I'm going to pull my weight toward helping our school improve. So all of this has been working really well, we've found a lot of success with it, and I'm encouraging other schools to do this as well. Thank you.
Excellent. I wonder if Sally and Deb and Linda could think about, if you're willing to, a session at some of our upcoming conferences or even over the next year on how that works and the success you're finding in it?
Definitely.
So we have breakouts at the School Improvement Conference, at Deadpool, special conferences for those on the priority list.
I wondered if, I wondered if it's been you doing that long enough to see any results with the students' achievements?
Yeah, this is our second year during the rounds, and we have seen a lot of practices that we've been trying to implement in our school, seeing them being used, and then we're looking at our student data, we look at each week of teachers' failure rates, looking at the ACT scores and those scores, and we have been seeing improvement. And especially been seeing improvement on the accountability part, where one of the big problems is teachers and PDs, is you give the teachers the PD, you demonstrate it to them, then you don't know or give them time to practice, or don't know if it's even being effective. Sometimes you spend all that time and then it's not even being used, so this way is showing the accountability for that, and we're really seeing that the things that we're showing our teachers that work, based on research, that they're using it in their classrooms. And we are seeing scores move up on different things, because we're, yeah, it has worked really well.
Dan?
I'm a big fan of the rounds model. In fact, I'm part of an effort to try and expand that model at university that's partnered with a number of schools in Detroit. So it's exciting to hear that you're using it, and it's great to kind of get your positive feedback on it. It kind of makes me think about the appropriateness or potential applicability of professional development in all manner of other professions, and whether or not it would be beneficial in teaching, whether that's, you know, residency or rounds models from medicine or guild models from other places. And so I'm just hopeful that we're kind of on the verge of, one of the things, we spend a lot of time talking about a lot of things, and I think all of us acknowledge, but we don't spend a lot of time, as of yet, really delving into teacher preparation and kind of the supports that teachers get along the way. We've talked about it a lot, but I don't know what we, you know, policy-wise have really been able to do of any significance, particularly given our kind of lack of, the relationship that we have with universities around this work. So I'm really curious and hopeful that we will see all sorts of kind of new professional development models that are, that work. That's probably enough said.
I guess I'd like to, first of all, this is awesome. This is the way I think it should be done. About four years ago, I had a chance to be a fly on the wall, so to speak, in a group over at Michigan State with this same group, the K-12 outreach group, when they brought in a gentleman who was in Southeast Asia using a system they called lesson study. And I don't know if you've heard of that at all, but it's very similar to what you're talking about with rounds, but they take it one step further. After they have these observations and they make these critiques and they talk as professionals to each other, it's always teachers, not with anybody else, then they develop what they believe what would have looked like if everything had been incorporated, how that presentation would have looked. One of them volunteers to go into a classroom, one of their classrooms, and do that while everyone else observes. And then based on that, they come back and they say, oh, hmm, that was really good, but we kind of got this part wrong. What if we did this? How would that look? And they work on this over the course of, I don't know, days, weeks, I'm not sure how long that is, until they have that lesson study done, and then they move to the next lesson. But it's a fascinating process, and they were finding that because of the lack of teacher preparation schools in Southeast Asia, that this was one of the best ways they could get good preparation for their teachers. And what I kept thinking was, well, yeah, they don't have any teacher preparation units, but what if we took that into our teacher preparation units? That would be just awesome, because I think this power of peers teaching peers and peers being able to be upfront and personal with each other really is powerful. So I commend you so much for doing that. That's great, but you might want to look at that lesson study. It's kind of interesting.
Definitely. Definitely. Thank you.
You know, if we're tagging on, if I could tag one, quick one on it, I think would be of interest to the Board. Yesterday, we met as leadership team and talked about, yesterday we met as leadership team, and one of the things we talked about is we're trying to put career development plans in place for every employee here who chooses to have one. I mean, there's a lot of folks that say, hey, I love what I'm doing, I'm right where I want to be, it works well with my family and all the rest. But I had kind of implemented an informal rule that if we were hiring at, let's say, a director level, we would want to have the best outside candidate and the best inside candidate to choose from. And everything being equal, we would go with an inside candidate. The catch-22 was, we weren't given experiences enough to our folks inside so that they really were able to match, in some cases, the outside candidate. There's some others where it's almost automatically an inside because of the nature of the specialty and the work. The reason I say this is, this is really going to take the department to a new level, I believe, because you're going to have people with rich experience that aren't needing to go somewhere else. And in state government, somewhere else doesn't mean a local district, that means another department. You know, Janet, who's our budget director, is retiring, and it's a family situation, and she's moving to Florida. And we have someone that, in effect, we've stolen from another department, which I don't think is known yet, so maybe I should jump ahead here, but we've, so we're at a point where, but how do we grow our own? I mean, we have people with a few more experiences that I think could have become budget director had we been able to give them some others in here. So it's a new kind of dedication. And I'll just speak for myself. I was lucky enough to have two superintendents before I was one, or I feel like I had been one for like 20 some years. And they taught me something that I try to do here. Every Friday at Suits Group, we invite other people into the specific items that we have on the agenda. And if we have on the agenda an item related often to something that's going to come to the Board in terms of a presentation or a decision on accountability or whatever, I think what happens is it's kind of, I think what Bobby Joe was saying, some of this is observation. As you can observe other people and what they're doing, that's more valuable than learning about it in a grad course. And I think I learned, to the degree I learned before I was a superintendent, some of how to do some of this, is you're observing how they think. And I had one who I think was very good, I mean, but had quirks, like we all do. So you also learn some of what you probably shouldn't do. You know, so I'm hoping that we can nurture this more in the department and really kind of catapult. We're fortunate enough, as you saw today in the last few meetings, we have a lot of young people in the best sense. I'm seasoned myself, so I don't mean that as a shot, but it's good to get new I'm seasoned myself, so I don't mean that as a shot, but it's good to get new blood and people who then think, I can actually have a career here, and I can actually grow here. So just thought I'd mention that since it simulates to some degree what Bobby Joe said. Compliments to you, Bobby Joe. Yes, committed. You want me committed?
No.
Oh.
No, it's a goal.
Marty, come on down. You're, I should say this, you know, I kid about Marty at these meetings a lot. He and his team, this last few weeks, you can imagine how overwhelming this was. And Nancy appreciated your comment at the legislative meeting and understanding, and all your, Cassandra and John did all, but just the analysis work alone, I kind of gave this in an email. We had one guy up till four in the morning trying to get this. This was a barrage of legislation, and all of the times I joke about him and with him, I would say it's with Marty's leadership that this really took place the last few weeks. So thanks, Marty. That's the last one you're getting.
Usually get that when you leave. Two of those this morning, I must, I don't want to be the third. The Senate has, as you may know, the legislation that all the attention is on today has passed and is going to the governor. The next priority that is coming through is the education reform legislation in the form of the EAA bill. That is still, they're still in committee, there are several subs going through. They believe that they're going to, what we understand is that they're going to use a substitute on a bill that's already in the system so that they may move it yet today or tomorrow. So it may be in a different bill number than what we've seen, but the early indications are that the substitute that they're working on, that there may be some agreement on, includes a lot of the concerns, or does not include a lot of the concerns, however you want to look at it, that the board expressed at the last meeting, where the language regarding all districts having to report to the department all their building information, vacant buildings, that is out of the bill, that the EAA will have to comply with all state assessments, all their schools have to comply with the state assessments. There's not the automatic transfer of the bottom 5% after they've been in three years in a row, that that's been taken out, that the language in Section 1280C, which deals with the redesign office, has been changed to align with our federal flexibility waiver, that the appointment of the state redesign officer is back with the state superintendent. We understand that those are all in the substitute.
Oh, they did put that?
Well, we understand, I mean, nothing has been reported out, but we are getting indications that that stuff is going to be in the substitute. But, you know, we're, of course, anything can change, but that's what we're hearing now. Right.
And they can't authorize schools, apart from their job of turning around the school or replacing it.
Correct.
Can't authorize, the super authorizing concern too.
Right. So, you know, we're still waiting to see what actually comes out, but that is what we're hearing now, and it may not be until tomorrow. The House Education Committee did meet this morning, but recessed and is still in recess, so the Senate has adjourned for the day. The House still is in, from what I understand, the latest I heard, so anything may happen, so just stay tuned and...
A gentleman back here, did he just come from there?
I don't know.
Ross?
Oh, no. Wendy's over there. Wendy's been there since eight o'clock this morning because, once you're in...
And you're in.
You didn't want to get out because you never get back in again.
Right.
So Ross has been monitoring.
What about the Appropriations Committee was meeting this morning too, I think? The K-12 Subcommittee on these bills?
Not on these bills. This is, this is a full...
I thought 6004 was on their agenda too.
That's not an appropriation bill. That's a full committee.
They got a notice of a committee meeting.
This is a full House Education Committee, it's a full committee, not the appropriations.
Okay, because I hope both of them were looking at this bill.
That's the Standing Committee met this morning, and it's in recess, they went to recess. So, I mean, that is really the big agenda item, other than the work that the board was doing this morning. We still have out there on the federal level, the so-called fiscal cliff and its effect on all federal spending, the sequestration. If nothing happens by January 1st, the sequestration will take effect, although the funds to schools really won't be effective until July 1st of 2013 because of the way the federal funds come through, but it still will affect if nothing happens. So that impact is very dramatic if Congress and the administration do not come to an agreement by January 1st.
And by the way, on that one, I mentioned how we meet Fridays. Last Friday, we met for a good hour and a half in detail on what kind of our preliminary plans as a department of what we would have to do if it turns out that takes place. And, you know, it's not pretty. It's obviously not pretty, because even if you lose, we could be in a situation where you lose federal funds for part of a person, but it still creates a dynamic that we have to eliminate, folks. Now, we're going to talk about it to all staff later this week, so they don't, they don't over-worry about this. I mean, it wouldn't kick in for us, I think, until October 1st. The districts would be July 1st, but ours would be October 1st.
That's correct. All right. So we're talking about Title I funds, we're talking about USDA school meals funds to schools. I mean, I think we have a number of $1.8 billion in federal funds to Michigan schools and as far as our work is concerned here at the department too, so it is dramatic. So we're hoping that they can come to some agreement. So I don't know, that's really my report, and if you want to take up this, it's, I'm at the pleasure of the...
Thanks, Marty.
Okay.
So as we look at revised comments on the Public Education Finance Project, as we do, let me just say, I do hope the board members can sign on to this, I think, important beginning of a sort of meta-critique of the school finance proposals and related ideas that, you know, does raise some issues and make some recommendations for how to do things perhaps differently and perhaps better, that every one of the board members is not going to agree with everything that's in here, tone and substance, but that, on balance, it is important, if we can, to raise some of the significant issues and point in some of the significant directions that we want to continue to work on both together as we iterate our position, but also have the public discussion about this include attention to. So with that spirit, I do hope that we can move something forward, hopefully together. But I know, do we want to make a motion and then make some other modifications, or how should we proceed?
You all have the...
We have a revision based on some of the...
Did one get sent out?
Yes.
Yeah.
She has the revision.
Just passed out this one, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just gave a procedure.
Mary Ann, yes.
I just have a suggestion. If we could try and figure out an avenue for those of us who might want to go on with the changes, but maybe are opposed to the whole, if we take two votes or something of that sort.
We did this morning say and make a change in the preamble.
Dan made a very good suggestion, that this is not a position of support or opposition.
Second paragraph.
This is the second paragraph down, but rather, in this document, we raise issues, concerns and recommendations, because as Dan said, you know, this is just the first of three parts before you ever really get a bill. So I think that that, I thought that was really well thought out on his part, that it doesn't look like we're supporting any bill.
And, you know, based on our input, our recommendations and many, many others, what the governor may end up proposing may look very different or be something totally different. And, you know, our job is to encourage and be part of the healthy discussion, how do we meet goals that we share, and how do we spend money to do so? And I think in that spirit.
I want to support John 1,000% on this, because I think evidence is in the EAA stuff. That was kind of similar in a sense. It's not like there was support for the concept of EAA, but by getting some of those issues out on the table, trust me, they wouldn't have happened if the board, and if I may say so myself, that we joined in also on that. And then in this case, I think you, some of these will find their way, I'm confident, into the final report to the governor, because you'll weigh in. And I think with Dan's point, as Mary Ann just pointed out or questioned, and when he pointed out the board does not take a position, that creates the dynamic that you may need, Mary Ann.
With the revised month first of EAA, it would have been possible to agree with the changes as well as both against it, if you took two votes, that's all I'm saying. I, because I'm opposed to it, it's a vote, I know it's a whole thing.
And I think what's, this is different in character to what's going on. The EAA was a piece of legislation that might have been voted on. This is a set of ideas that are being floated and developed by Richard McClellan and company that they have also, on behalf of the governor, but they have also said, we want to have critique, criticism, comment on these ideas, which is an important opportunity for us to take advantage of and to weigh in on our perspective on some of these issues now and to encourage continued further attention to what's going on with these issues in the future.
Eileen, and then Dan.
I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice here, I just know that. I also support it. I just want to insert some verbs in the adverbs, because I wasn't there at lunch, it's just a little indulgent, just 50 minutes, because I'm lying, or there's some of the lines. Are we to appoint in the session where we are thinking about moving forward, are we still editing, what are we going to be doing here?
I think we need to make a motion first.
Okay.
So...
Then I move adoption of the comments on Public Education Finance Project draft legislation.
Moved by Eileen.
First, we should change the word legislation, draft proposal?
Draft, draft.
Not legislation. I'm just reading this line, comments on Public Education Finance Project draft.
Report, really, it's a report, it's a report to the governor.
Well, comments on it, that's the title.
Can we...
So it was moved by Eileen, supported by Nancy, it's changed to report.
We need to vote to, before we start changing things.
Right.
We need to vote.
Yeah, then we'll change it.
Was it seconded?
I did, I seconded.
Okay, now discussion.
Okay, now the discussion.
I'd like to have an adverb or a verb or something in here. Just, it's in the quality control and new living modalities in schools. Just as all schools must ensure quality education, new schools of all varieties must provide high-quality education, period. We should prevent foreign new schools and operators from ever opening.
Where's this?
Okay, the first, second, second set of bold words on the first page, quality control to new living modalities in schools. Just as all schools must ensure quality education. Second line, just as all schools must ensure quality education, when new schools of all varieties must provide high-quality education, period. We should prevent foreign new schools and operators from ever opening. And then skipping down to the third paragraph...
Can I suggest one quick?
Where are you, Eileen? She's right here.
Eileen?
Yeah.
You're going to have to go a little more slowly for us. Sorry, it's hard to translate.
If I have to tell you, it's the span of my breath.
Ah.
Okay, I'll try it again. I'm just trying to insert after the word varieties, must provide.
Yes.
Okay.
Can we suggest...
Wait, wait, wait. High-quality education, period. We should prevent.
Education, period, delete, comma, and, and insert, we should...
Must provide high-quality education, period.
Right.
We should prevent, we should prevent, we should prevent foreign new schools and operators from ever opening.
Thank you.
And then the rest of them.
Can I just suggest one friendly amendment to your amendment?
Sure.
So just as all existing schools must ensure quality. And that way, you have the distinction between the new schools and the second grade.
Right, no, they don't. Okay, and then down to the third paragraph, the third line, after the hyphen, I would say it must be appropriately regulated. You could add, when you say very tightly, schools are not very tightly regulated, so what you want to do is to say something here that makes sure that the job is done, but you don't want to incite people to thinking shirt, as Nancy said, this is the board's note, which is that we're only trying to prevent anything new, good from happening unless it exceeds the quality standards that are implied for existing schools. I think what you want to do is to make sure that the job is done right, but you don't want to claim that stimulus, if we can avoid it. And I'm just throwing it out, so then on the second page, John, I love your writing, but I would start, if I can pull it off, there's something rectifying the omission. I would say legislation for new schools must contain quality control criteria and, sorry, and the school choice legislation of 2011 must be amended for quality criteria also.
Okay. So far, I'm personally okay with these things, as long as we're...
You're not, you're not, I'm glad.
I missed that.
Will you repeat that one?
Eileen?
Eileen?
Yeah.
Will you repeat that one?
The first one.
Repeat that bullet.
The most recent one.
I knew you were going to say that, I can't even read my own writing besides talking. Okay, so I think the way, we should start off with what you're calling for in the legislation, which is legislation for new schools must contain quality control criteria, comma, and the school choice legislation of 2011 must be amended for quality criteria also, quality control criteria also.
Danny?
Yep.
What else you got?
Okay. And then on page four, can I go on? Or can you go brief?
Slowly.
Okay, slowly, allowing for pages turn. This, I say, and this is the third paragraph down, this proposal would exacerbate the DX of Pat Lockson, I would say, that I left off, would exacerbate this problem, dash, schools and districts could offer lower-quality opportunities without facilitating the best choices for the students.
Could offer lower quality, say it again, repeat that, please?
Could offer lower-quality opportunities without facilitating the best choices for the students.
I probably agree with the potential impact. They might, it's a little different point. It's a little different point, but I agree, I agree with it, and I'm not going to, I certainly argue with it, because I think it's a very legitimate point.
Okay. If you're trying to make a different one beside that, we could, but when I read it, that's what popped out that we need.
I think that would be the ultimate impact of districts trying to keep the money by doing everything themselves, probably could be worse than a different option, but it also could be better too, but you never know. Anyway, I'm comfortable.
Cassandra.
I have a question.
Cassandra, then Kath, then Cassandra.
I just have a quick comment. On the first, in the very beginning, we say that the State Board of Education offers these thoughts and advice to the governor and legislature. I don't think that's who we're offering this to.
We're offering thoughts, right?
Exactly. Yeah, so if we could change that.
Before we just, I don't view, I don't recognize, with all due respect, you know, the Oxford Foundation as potentially worthy of us giving direct advice to, meaning, our job is to give advice to the governor and legislature and the public on what we think. We are commenting on these proposals that are coming from the Oxford Foundation. That was an effort to try to include the, our role as advice and, you know, guidance, but...
But we said in the beginning that the reason we're doing this right now is because we have a deadline of tomorrow to give this to the Oxford Foundation, and that whatever comes out of the governor's office may be completely different. So I don't think we're giving this to the governor's office or the legislature, because that would insinuate that we have agreed with whatever is coming out and we're proceeding forward.
And it would also insinuate that the governor agrees with this as well, which he may not.
Exactly.
Can we say that to the Oxford, ultimately, to be considered?
The title should be, the Oxford Foundation, rather than the Oxford Foundation.
Well, a compromise maybe just to strike the words to the governor and legislature and just say, offers these thoughts and advice in fashioning and edu-
and just say, "Offers these thoughts and advice in fashioning an education system." So you're just offering it to the world.
And that's why it's related to my point. We, we are offering our, to the public and everyone, our...
Thoughts and advice, period.
It's fine.
But it gets around not, yeah, I mean, 'cause it could insinuate, to Cassandra's point, but it also isn't, how do I wanna say this, not pandering to a, a less, you know, you're the state board.
Right.
Right. We don't work for Richard McClellan.
No, we don't. I think it's the other one.
No, I mean that as a positive, that, that your role is beyond a group that's working on this, so it doesn't empower them necessarily, but it also doesn't insinuate legislation, given the second paragraph. Okay? Others?
Kathy, Edith, so...
Kath?
I had a number of them. In that first paragraph, we...
Where?
Quality control, on the first page, and quality control of new learning modality. Could we use easier English than modality? I think, if we're making this for the public to read, this sounds very morbid.
Why use a nickel word when a five-dollar one will do? I think modalities is a good word to capture all the different, we don't even know about, but if there's a better word...
I know what it means, but I don't know, you know, it's sort of, might turn people off from reading it, but that was my...
New learning environment, is that what you're asking?
If you've, if you've got a better word that means the same thing, I'm all for it.
This environment.
New recipes?
Delivery mechanisms.
Okay, then that works.
Just say, new learning mechanism, quality control of new, in new schools.
There's a culinary term in here somewhere. I just can't think of it quickly enough.
I would just say, quality control in new schools, check out the learning modalities and...
Except some of these aren't schools.
I'm resistant, but I...
Except, except some of those aren't schools.
They're not schools. They're online programs, they're potential partial courses on, you know...
Well, okay. Maybe it's just me, but that was my reaction. Okay. Then, I really like the, the third paragraph, when you talk about these schools must be very tightly regulated.
That we just seem to appropriately regulate.
Yeah, we did take that out, or change it to appropriate. Oh, okay. Well...
Which I think is, is okay, is appropriate.
As long as it's regulated.
Yeah.
Okay. Expanding quality choices on the second page.
Can you say that?
Yeah.
Yeah, right there.
It's fully an equitable...
I said it first.
Well, additional choice ought to be encouraged, and some parents and families won't be able to take advantage of new choices, then the choices aren't equitable. They would likely serve to aid those who are already advantaged and formed. I agree with that, okay. And the, the next paragraph, making choice work equitably, in the third line, we say, students most in need of better learning, better schools, and new choices are the least advantaged, and if not supported, most likely could be left behind in schools with diminished resources to obtain quality education. We're talking about the students, they're not providing the education.
Yeah, they're obtained.
To receive or obtain.
The, the point was intended to say, the schools can't deliver quality education when their schools have diminished resources.
Then in schools with diminished resources to, to provide?
Yeah.
That was the point.
I was, I was looking at the students, we're, talk about the students, and I was referring back to the students. Maybe we could make two sentences, this will be complicated.
Yeah, because you're talking about the students that are being left behind, and then you switch suddenly to the schools that are...
Better schools, the new choices are...
There you go.
I think diminished resources are not affordable to provide.
They, the students, were most likely left behind in schools with, oh, I see what you're saying, in schools with diminished resources to provide.
Unable to provide.
Yeah, resources unable to provide.
Let's say, left behind, period.
But that's, there's a, there's a broader, different point, which is, I mean, this is one of the key features of the discussion, is if, if more kids take money to choose, what are they choosing? Does it help them?
I think we have to make that as clear as...
Less money left for...
This will take money away from the traditional public schools and make them less able to provide.
Make a separate sentence. Why not just, I like your suggestion, though, why not just say, in schools with diminished resources, unable to provide.
That are then unable to provide.
Oh, unable to provide, okay. Okay, that would help. Schools that are then unable to provide.
And Mary Ann said something quietly, I just wanna please, if, if, a lot of micro editing, important points I wanna make sure we agree on, but if, we're not gonna get everything perfect in this, so I just wanna encourage that.
Throw you under the bus, Mary Ann.
He threw you under the bus there.
Somebody else might, too. Is there something else? No, I got somebody else, somebody else who does.
Nancy and John have some language changes that they agreed to in that, on that page two, under special needs population, that, it would say, the, the first sentence, special needs population, would read, "It is imperative that consideration of how students with disabilities and English-language learners can participate and benefit from."
Yes.
So...
We're making positive, we're making positive, you want everything to be positive.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's...
Exposing my own hypothesis. I agree, you know, she is right.
Right.
I've learned to say that, being married twenty-five years ago.
It's time.
You were right again.
Again is good.
That's, that's better. I just learned something.
What I say, not the reality.
Again, I learned something. Thank you. That's the best thing I picked up today.
Yeah.
Again.
That's your retirement.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Anything else to comment on?
I just have three small typos, but I can just give those directly to Marty. Do you want me to?
No, no, I'm, I'm just teasing.
I'd be happy to tell you what they are.
But I marked up all the copies.
So all the lines, like, do you want, so as we make changes, like, typos inevitably happen, do you want that, or are you good, you're, you and your team edit and you're good, you're just taking...
You can send recommendations, sure.
Yeah.
All right. We're good?
Who made the motion?
That was made by Eileen, it was supported by Nancy.
I just wanted, on page two, wait a minute, I'm looking at the, the one we had this morning, I don't know if it's doing. Did we change that second, I don't, couldn't get it, Eileen said the... Did we change that second paragraph on page two, to rectify the omission of school choice? I know she was making suggestions.
Yes.
Did we did change that?
Yeah, we just flipped it around. Thank you, Eileen, because I had the same notion to leave with...
Well, I thought that should be changed, just, okay.
And, and...
I wanted to check on what this is, I'm writing it up, what happened before. I couldn't really check on these comments, I just wanted to make it really clear, 'cause that's what you're worried about.
And, and Kathy, back to the, the, the heading of this, we wanna say, comments on public education finance project proposals?
Report.
Report?
Or the Oxford Foundation proposal, or the McClellans, they told the district, he says he's responsible for it. Yeah.
That's why, he also says publicly, with or without sanction, you know, I'm doing this for the governor, so that's why I'd rather just say, there's public education finance, projects, proposals, whatever it is.
Harvard's copy, a C C to the governor, that is a proposal.
Proposals work for me.
So we're going from project to proposal?
Comments on public education finance proposal.
Some of these would lead over to other bills that may start finding light a day, so that would be appropriate. Because it gives Marty and all of us some ammunition that there could be a paragraph in here that we're not anticipating on January eighteenth has something to do with a new bill. Would already give us some level of guidance of proposals as broad enough. But, yes?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't...
Please, no.
I do have, did you have another one?
Go ahead. I'm working on two different...
That's why I'm only looking at this one. 'Cause I, I can't think that one. Page five, recommend unbundled funding at the secondary school level only. I have, I've thought about this an awful lot. There are some middle schools that need to be unbundled a lot.
And that's why I purposely, listening to, actually listening to my colleagues, Eileen, secondary technically needs middle and high school.
Right.
So it provides the opportunity for what I...
Okay, so you intend for middle school to be included in this?
I think it could be. I didn't, I didn't go as far as, I couldn't figure out how to translate, Eileen, your language in legislative committee about age appropriate or when appropriate, but I, I think the point is, well taken, there may be a lot of good opportunities at both the middle and certainly a lot at the high school and post-secondary, so what I hope is secondary provides space for looking at how you would thoughtfully and effectively unbundle for middle and high school and post-secondary, apart from K five, now, right?
Yeah, I, I guess, I guess then the, the next question that comes, I mean, I like, I like your, your train of thought type of thing, or your, how shall I say this, it's like we're seeing into your mind as you're questioning yourself, why are we doing these things? But the, the statement, have elementary students shop for pieces of their education when we are expecting them to all take the same topics? That's no different than any other place in the, in the K twelve, K twelve curriculum. I mean, when we have them take chemistry or, or Algebra II, we expect them to all take this, we have the same content expectation.
No, I think, I think it is different at, at the K six level and potentially up in the middle school. We're basically demanding schools to teach these topics at this grade level, you know, consistently across Michigan, right? You know, we have, we have content standards, we're even grade level specific. When you get to high school, you can teach it in any order, at any time, backwards, sideways, you know, you, you begin to already not have all students take the same essential curriculum, even at the same year.
And for those students who are ready to go on to year, to fourth grade math and third grade, and we're not gonna allow them to do that?
No, I think within that flow, you can create that opportunity. I'm just, generally, we're sort of demanding the same education in every school for those levels.
I get not going to other resources in an elementary level for, for content, but I'm not sure that's what this says, and so that's why I'm asking the question. 'Cause I wanna make certain that that's clear to those who read, that that's what we're after, not that we don't believe that students should be at their appropriate level of learning regardless of what their grades is. Does, does that make, do you get what I'm saying?
Yeah, I guess it was sort of a different point, but I think we were trying to illustrate sort of vividly, at upper levels, there are a lot of differential opportunities and unique opportunities that you wanna facilitate.
Sure.
At the elementary level, you're trying to basically deliver the same bundle of education.
Oh, wait, we're unbundling.
Right, that's why, that's why we wanna keep it bundled, you know, potentially, 'cause it's really the same package of education, whereas the upper levels, it's, it's a potentially individualized package that you are certainly trying to facilitate. Some kids go into career technical, some take their A P or higher-level courses or some different course at other places.
So what if we said what you just said? So the sentence that begins, "Have elementary students," that's that question, what if we were to eliminate that sentence and instead say, we should be, like, something about, I'm trying to summarize what you just said in one sentence, we should be, all elementary school students should be learning the same material in order to have a solid foundation upon which to build differentiated learning down the road, something like that. Acknowledging that it can be done at different paces for students, right? So if you're a student who's, you know, gonna get through K five in three years, great, and if it's gonna take you six years, then that's great, too, but the same bundle of material is what we're trying to get, so that every student has a basic foundation of, you know, knowing how to read, so on and so forth, before they move off into the differentiated learning opportunities that middle school, high school, post-secondary opportunities present.
Would you wanna change that to core content instead of knowledge?
Sure.
Because, well, I know this seems subtle, but, but if you...
No, 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 I wasn't being, I wasn't trying to be subtle, I was just trying to capture in one sentence the idea that...
I know. I, I just know that, that if you have a, I'm thinking of these schools who do very well by having their theme in their school, you know, okay, today, this year, we're gonna take all of our core content, and we're gonna put it through the notion of an ever-widening natural world. Well, they might have all kinds of different knowledge they're teaching those kids, but it'll get at that core content.
Sure.
And so that's why I'm trying to...
Sure, no, I, I'm, I'm not, yes.
I, I read into our discussion at legislative committee, the inference that this system change is evolutionary also, and that part of what we're saying is we could envision more of this at a secondary level right now, and it's premature to even, I mean, my quick way to think about it is I can't picture my granddaughter in kindergarten in an all-day online, so I, that's what I inferred from some of this, and it allowed it, was it's evolutionary, because we can kind of see it or envision it at a high school, secondary, makes a good compromise.
I think we say, legislative, so how about this, Dan, we say, we really want to unbundle learning for K five, which raised the question for shopping, but then have a sentence that says, "We expect all elementary students to master the same package of knowledge and skill," period, or core content.
Well, I, you know, I like knowledge that is in core content.
Well, then you limit what kind of knowledge you can give them.
No, well, not necessarily, you can still supplement it, right? The point is that there is a basic core here that we want all kids to get, and how you get there and all of that, I mean, it's really, really to be speaking to all that.
How about core content and skills? 'Cause I think there are skills that you build by learning how to play with Jimmy and, you know, I mean, there's, there's additional reasons why you might wanna have kids in a living classroom in school.
That's right.
But I think you want them to go beyond that, too. That's what, that's what knowledge...
That's why I like the garage that I...
We expect all elementary students to master the same package of knowledge, core content, and skill.
Yeah.
When we can...
I wanna add something.
You can take this whole, that whole idea, of people who don't know anything about how schools work, and I think it's sort of the very, very difficult aspect of that cafeteria style, getting course here, one class here, and one class there, and one class someplace else.
And you have to agree about it.
First of all, the students or the families have to know an awful lot about what's going on all over, and it's gonna be very hard to, it's very, not many people are gonna be able to figure all that out, I think, and I think...
And that's why we all need to raise these issues and encourage a very vigorous discussion about how we proceed with this, you know.
Well, only if you're very advantaged people would be able to take them there.
I think you underestimate what people can do. I, I've seen an awful lot of them do the work that gets them outside and going to their places, because they're so concerned about having their kids be smart, is what they're telling me.
Well, I know there are people very concerned, I hope they can take them there. No, I think they'll learn. I think, it's gonna be part of our responsibility to help them learn.
I think there's something to that, and I, I, I mean, right now, frankly, even within the current system, there's parents that don't probably look at the full selection they could make within a comprehensive high school. And, and as a result, that's Kathy's point, I mean, now we're asking to go beyond that, but at least you could envision, it's, it's, right now, they're making choices within a building, kind of. But I, I think the point's well taken, Kathy's point, it, there, I, I saw it as a, in, in the field through years, that you just, if you didn't promote this, there are subsets of kids that will absolutely not go towards certain kind of course offerings. It could, and it could be the thing we talked about this morning, art and music, that, you know, we used to have, this can happen also with parents who see their kids, she's gonna be an engineer, that's it, and before you know it, they don't even think about, well, you want your kid who's gonna be an engineer to also be exposed to music, and that's why you have a counselor presumably and other people to help them think about this rich experience they could have called high school. Dan, you had your hand.
I'm good.
Yes, you are. And before you know it, they don't even think about, well, you want your kid who's going to be an engineer to also be exposed to music? And that's why you have a counselor presumably and other people to help them think about this rich experience they could have called high school. Dan, you had your hand.
I'm good.
Yes, you are.
Wow.
On that note.
Are you good, Mary Ann?
I just said what I wanted to say.
I knew it.
There you go. The point that I actually wanted to make was to, so, listening to Kathy talk, I just wanted to, um, uh, repeat for Mary Ann and Kathy's benefit among others, that this is not a position for or against, and we'll have an opportunity to take a position for or against when there's actually something to take a position for or against. This isn't that. This is a proposal sitting out there in ether, let's just make comments on it, and when there's something actually for us to take a position on, we will.
Even in the field, one reason this has been confusing is it's in bill format, even though it's not a bill. So it's certainly.
I can't understand what it is, what it is. Very, very clever.
So, was there? Okay, go ahead.
First off, I want to, John, I really appreciate the work that you, that you've done on this and the, and the redraft. And I think it's very appropriate for the board to discuss these proposed ideas. It's, it is an excellent idea to give feedback and so on and so forth. I myself will, will not be voting for this position because there are a number of assumptions within that, that I don't share. One is the distrust of parental choice, so I, I evaluate the, and I've seen studies that show that, for example, students get into, into charter school by lottery. So it's totally by chance. A study was done of the students who got into charter school and those who didn't, and those who, and those who did had significantly much better performance than those who did not, in the case of the lottery. So the conclusion in the study is that having choice correlates with, with the chief, with educational achievement. Because presumably the others who entered the lottery were as motivated as the ones who, who had actually been selected. So I, I think it's the, so I, I put a higher value on choice. Second is the issue of quality. Quality is assumed in this document to be one dimensional and that you can use one standard to determine the quality of all kinds of schools. And I think that's fallacious on our, on our part. The concern to have a set of standards, I think, is legitimate and I think as expressed in the MEET, soon to be Better Balance plus MEET, testing is, to my mind, that standard that we, that we use to measure schools' performance and so on. And I think that's, I think that's sufficient. If there are others, measures of quality, I guess I want to, I'd question the necessity for, for those. And third, another portion of this document is based on the, you know, the perfect is the enemy of the good. I, I think that advancing choice for, for everyone improves for all. And the fourth assumption is that choice will damage public schools. And I vigorously dissent from that. I think that it will build up the public schools that have quality programs. It relieves local public schools from having to be all things to all students. And it does spell, I hope it spells doom for the perpetually, what we used to call it perpetual, not perpetual, but persistently low achieving schools. And that is scary for, for a number of, number of folks. Change is scary. Insofar as there are winners and losers, the losers know who they'll be under this proposal and, yeah, they're crying out.
Should I, without responding to your points, I appreciate your thoughtful dissent.
But, Richard, I'm concerned, those are really good points. I'd like to see them in here whether they knew out of it. Well, I mean, I think those are, those are cogent points that need to be made to people. And then certainly as they look at how they frame this, you know, if we want to talk about quality differently, if we want to talk about choice differently, if we want to talk about any of those things you talked about differently with those ideas in place that might get them to do that.
Well, let me vigorously affirm the right of the majority of the board to state their, their shared assumptions and, so I.
But the point of debate is to be often persuaded.
Sure.
And so I love it when you say these things and then don't vote for them because then I'm thinking, yeah, but where was the persuasion? I mean, I'm, I'm ready to be persuaded. I'd love to have that be a part of it rather than having you ask from.
Dan's, I appreciate the effort. I do think, and Dan may have some thoughtful help here because he's a thoughtful person. But I do, I do agree that there are, it's not really assumptions, but yes, do we need one quality standard? Yes. So in that sense, part of the effort is to say, we can't have anything goes education and have such a diversity of ways we assess whether our kids are growing or learning academically that it's not comparable and it doesn't actually help with choice because you can't, you don't know who's learning on any comparable mechanism. And I do think that while, and then more choice without quality control is potentially a recipe for worse learning for the student. And the significant issue here is significant scale of resources flowing to a diversity of learning modalities that will, do have big impact financial on schools that exist today. And that they, that just needs to be considered and somehow, not more than considered, it needs to be factored into a, a way of doing things that doesn't do damage on both fronts, you know, leave kids who don't make other choices worse off in their education and kids who do make a diversity of choices, make sure it's contributing to their, their improvement of their learning, you know. So I do, I do think there's legitimate differences of opinion in some of the both assumptions and points that we, that the collective might want to make. And so, you know, I would be as eager trying to persuade you back to agree with our position or my position, which may be impossible, and that's fine, you know, so.
And if I may respond to Nancy, I, John deserves a great deal of credit. He got this draft out to us and solicited response and I had opportunity to respond on, via email and didn't. So it's not, it's not, I mean, I deeply appreciated the, this board's practice of soliciting input. Another part of it too is, you know, after, sometimes you don't think clearly until it's percolating, percolating. So that's another, I think, this discussion helps surface some of these ideas.
And I also, as you know, I, I really appreciate everybody's efforts to come together and share some thoughtful ideas and recommendations. Hopefully, the majority are ideally unanimous, but that we can't always have happen. But also, it is, as you know, the product of every elected board member here to assert their thoughts into the public sphere. And a thoughtful dissent from Richard or a different set of ideas or any of you is, is healthy and should, to be encouraged.
That's why I said, by the way, to McClellan and Riddell, when they came in on the technical changes with us, that they should listen in on these meetings. I mean, on a serious note. And maybe commend to them, when we're going to give them the technical stuff and these positions, that you may want to, these are out there, we can tell them what minute level it's at to, you know, skirt to there, we could clip it for them actually. And so, because some of the best discussion, I think, came in trying to get to this agreement that could be even helpful to them honing a better product. So, we're good?
Can I have one technical, or not technical, but clarification? So that language that we talked about regarding the secondary unbundling, we expect all elementary students to master the same package of knowledge, core content, and skills. That's the agreed to. And then strike out that second sentence of that paragraph, have elementary students shop for pieces. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Good, so we've had a move by Eileen, supported by Nancy. Any further discussion? On paper, I.
I.
Post saying?
Yay.
Okay, what was yours, Eileen?
Well, mine's an "I" based on the fact that this is a preliminary finding of a discussion point that are going to lead to a better bill.
Good, okay.
Mine, me too.
Yeah, they're all, everyone's there.
That is the board's statement.
Can I say, thank you, everybody. And I, what I would recommend.
It's a lot of work to do this.
Well, it's everybody's work. I mean, everybody is trying to contribute and, and work to shape good ideas that we want to help see happen. So, I think after maybe a couple of days, the dust clears, we might want to publicly share these sets of idea, preliminary ideas and recommendations and also obviously share them publicly with the Oxford Foundation. We might want to work on a transmission, you know, scenario here. I'm sure we can do that.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Excellent work. And we're at the point of.
Excuse me, are we going to, is Marty going to go through any of those points of, in technical terms, or just, or going to just send that over?
The plan would be to present that to them with the board's position here.
Do we, interesting.
Marty has, has given them to you, but we're happy to. Marty, till Jerry runs for the board, you better be sitting here, buddy.
I thought I was done, sorry.
No, we're just, on a serious note, we're, did you want to highlight or kind of capture what the so-called technical pieces are, is what, what Kathy and Nancy were just asking about?
Sure. I mean, there, a lot of the pieces closely align with the positions made in this paper, dealing with accountability and assessments. I'm trying to find it here, maybe it's in here.
No, these are, these are, you know, originally, originally when this started, it's interesting because at least the way we understood it was not necessarily to have gotten into some of these other areas. It was almost going to be a technical rewrite of the 1979 State Aid. So that's what our guys have been working on. Because there's a lot of stuff, if I could capture it, it might be the left hand, right hand, something was added that was contradictory to an early one. So our, from our directors all the way through the organization, they've been working on this for months really to say, let's correct this and get it right. And that's what technical.
And the reason I ask about that is that when we go and talk with our legislators and, and we say to them, you know, there are a lot of technical things that we really need to be certain are taken care of in this opportunity, they'll say, like what? And I don't know.
Well.
So.
Are there a couple that are?
As I understood this, this, the analysis that we were sent a week or so ago.
Mm-hmm.
Was based on a, on a draft bill. There is a draft of a bill based on the Oxford Foundation proposal. It doesn't have a number, it hasn't been introduced or anything, but somebody's drafted a bill.
The Oxford.
And this refers to that bill.
Yeah, the Oxford Foundation has created a, a draft proposal in bill form. It hasn't been given to the legislature or the governor, so, you know, there's, there's no blueback, there's no bill number, it's not even at, at the legislature yet, excuse me. But it was, I think it was designed in bill form so that people could understand it the way it may come out. So, so in that sense, it was in bill form, per se.
So they are ready to introduce the bill.
Well, I, I, I think as Cassandra said earlier, this will go to the governor.
Do you ask about the whole again?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. But my question, I guess, Marty, is this that you sent us?
A week or so.
December 5th was the legislative committee.
So it was the day before.
Oh, okay.
We got it.
All right, so nothing has changed? You haven't found anything new? This is complete in itself?
Yeah, yeah.
That's all, that's all I really wanted to know.
Okay.
Thanks.
I guess the question, are there any of the bigger issues that you, you mentioned a little bit about when we met legislatively that are just, are significant, big, technical, for almost beyond technical issues? Like, how do you assign accountability properly? I mean, are there any things that are important to just flag so that we understand? What are the big issues in, in here?
Yeah, it's, it's how do you assign accountability? Who is held responsible or accountable for child education? When you talk about the, the various modalities, oh, thank you. And like special education, I mean, there are many requirements tied to federal special education funds that we can't change at the state level, that we have to comply with. And as, if they create this new unbundled system, how is the funding dispersed? I mean, this is the, this is the State Aid Act, this is appropriation. It's, it's not really spelled out quite clearly enough in the proposal we see, so we still have a lot of technical questions on how our State Aid Office actually dispenses the funds or if we do it, or do the local districts, does, does the money go to the local districts and then they disperse it? So there are a lot of technical issues like that. Assessments, again, we want to make sure that there are standard assessments, the same thing are in the position paper that was just adopted here. Quality controls, things like that.
And some of these, we're calling them technical issues, they're technical questions. It's like, we don't think you've resolved these yet with your concepts. The biggest one for us is, we don't see any way in the current federal view of accountability that it could accommodate this. Having said that, that doesn't mean that, you know, there wouldn't be an opportunity to submit a amendment to our flexibility waiver and see what happened. But, you know, we're certainly not going to leave the feeling that a lot of this stuff could just work out and everything's going to be fine. So there, that's what our staff is doing, is bringing a lot of these questions to the forefront. Because the concept's one thing and actually implementing it, a lot of these other things would have to happen too. Now, I think there have been times in some of those meetings when we probably look like obstructionists, when we're just trying to say, we're the department, that's our main job, and we can't implement pieces in this, no matter what you think, and no matter what the policymakers like yourselves appropriately think. Still, that's what, that's what technical is. If you can talk till we're blue in the face, that doesn't mean we can get this done in any way that's going to, well, the clearest one's accountability piece. I don't know of any way that we would get some of this through a federal accountability workbook right now. But in fairness, that doesn't mean we can't or shouldn't submit some of that as a waiver to Arnie and, you know, if it got through the process. And we'll have more time for that. You know, we'll have more of the same. When it, when it finally goes from a bill format to a bill, then we'd say, is this still outstanding with these complications to it? And do we want to support the idea that it goes through in a, in a, as an amendment to the flexibility waiver? That would be for us to decide. So there's still a lot of, lot of water to go under the, whatever the heck the expression is. Good?
Thank you. Thank you.
This was great today. I mean, great job. Comments, we're at 12 comments by state board members? Thanks, Marty. Thanks, Ross. Yes. Yes, we're at that point.
Well, I would like to address my personal appreciation to Mary Ann and Nancy for their, their dedicated service and their commitment to public education and to try to get every student to have a good quality education. And the recognition of how important public education is to the public school and for us to try and their wonderful colleagues. And we didn't always agree on everything, but we, we, we were always friendly and, and admired each other and I, I sort of miss both of you very, very much. And I want to thank you personally for all your dedication. We've become very good friends and, and, and laugh, be honest, and sit with them on the board.
We travel well together. We travel well together.
Yes.
A model for the country. Other comments on any topics? Then our next meeting is January 15. And I think we're going to go right to, I saw them setting up, they're anticipating that we're getting done a little quicker than we were sure we were going to. So it's more like three, I guess we did kind of say it might be three or four. But we're ready to adjourn to, in Kathy's spirit, the very appropriate reception in honor of both Nancy Danhoff and Mary Ann McGuire, who we, we are going to miss very much. So, meeting adjourned.
One last, one last word, one last word, goodbye, Mary Ann, and goodbye, Nancy. I wish I could.
Goodbye, Mary Ann. Hope you recover quickly. Yeah, feel better.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Take care.
Okay, Eileen, thanks.